Mike Zullos.
He's here.
Yes, right there. Hi, Mike. He's behind Frank.
All right, we're back in open session. And the next item on our agenda is approval of meeting minutes of December 1st.
Move to approve our December 1st, 2014, meeting minutes.
Second.
Any changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Payroll and vendor warrants.
I'll move to approve the current payroll and vendor warrants.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, citizens speak. Do we have anyone tonight who would like to address the Board of Citizens and speak? Mr. Joe Henning.
Which chair? This one? Sure. Okay. I'm Phil Joe Henning, 23 Parkwood Drive, Milton. I had seen in the Milton Times where you guys had met with the town moderator and others talking about participation in town government and participation in town meeting. There were a number of ideas that I saw that, you know, they talked about technology and making the warrant available earlier, and I think all that's valuable. At the same time, I think there's another problem that is going on. And I think it's the desire of the town to reach out to others, let's say, new people in town, people with strong opinions on various things, people who are fighters rather than people who sit back. One of the things that sticks with me was one of the first selectmen's meetings that I came to, Michael Joyce came and talked about the Government Study Committee. I think Mr. Hurley was the only selectman that was there then, and Mr. Shields and Mr. Sweeney were there. And Michael Joyce talked about his desire to put this Government Study Committee together. And he was, I think, either a sophomore or a junior at Boston College. And I was shocked at the way his ideas were greeted. There was like a very strong negative vibe, you know. He's a college kid. You know, this would be a great project for younger people in town to get together and talk about what they might want. But instead of, let's say, embracing the idea and welcoming him to do such a thing with, you know, maybe other friends or other young people in town, everybody started, you know, going off the tracks, started talking about, oh, he wants to get rid of town meeting. He never said he wanted to get rid of town meeting. That was not something he talked about. But, you know, what I'm talking about is not Michael Joyce, but the embrace, or the lack of embrace. And I see that a lot of times, and I get concerned about it. I think another thing that I notice when I go to town meeting is that it doesn't look like Milton. There are a number of people of color in Milton. There aren't that many people of color in town meeting. I think that there's a failure to reach out to people who have not been here all their lives, or their grandparents didn't live here, or they didn't go to Milton High School. You know, I think it's time to open the door much more welcomingly to people who are not typical participants in town government. I think that's the secret to make, let's say, town meeting more inclusive, more welcoming, and more progressive, rather than worrying only about technology. That's part of the answer, but not the whole answer. And I see this, like the idea of talking about concerns of being inclusive and having, like, the town moderator come and talk about that. The town moderator, I'm not putting him down, I'm just simply saying he's part of the status quo. And I think really what needs to happen is that people less part of the status quo need to get involved. For instance, the Government Study Committee, when it was actually put together, I looked at who's on it, and there are former town employees and things like that. That's not bad. They should be a part of the Government Study Committee. But, you know, we shouldn't strive to control the participants in each kind of meeting so strongly that it restricts the flow of ideas into committees where we want to bring good ideas to the surface and then cull them. But you don't want to cull them before they come to the surface. It wouldn't make any sense. So, you know, I think, you know, I would just like to plant the seed that it might not just be technology that's a problem with town meeting. It might be inclusiveness, desire of the town to change, desire of the town to hear new ideas. There's plenty of time to shoot them down. Let's hear them first. Thanks.
Go ahead. Anyone else for citizens speak tonight? Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Hello.
Please just state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name's Liz O'Rourke Harris, and I live at 79 Mar Avenue.
Thank you.
I'm here because I'm very concerned about the airplane problems that we've been having in Milton for the last couple of years. I, today, Walter Timulty sent me a letter via email. Did any of you get this?
Yes.
You did. So I don't have to read it to you?
Yes.
Okay. And I agree with what he's saying very much. And I'm also, have been participating in a Milton group called Boston Fair Skies. And I've been working on a brochure to hand out to Milton citizens. And we hope to have that printed hopefully by February 1st. And it has a lot of information on it about airplane noise and pollution and how it affects us, and also contact information for people if they feel that they need to call someone to complain. But I'm here tonight to just give you some information. This is from one of the members of the committee of Boss Fair Skies. It's Judy Kennedy. And she wasn't able to be here tonight because she's sick. But she gave me this to read to you. "For those of us who are under runway 27 departures, it has been used every morning since January 1st, except for approximately three mornings, and the planes begin as early as 5:30 a.m. The FAA should look at the 27 departures and consider rerouting them." And I know Judy a little bit from the meetings that I've attended, and this is very understated for her, I would say. She's very passionate. She's a longtime resident of Atherton Street. And I wrote some of my thoughts that I had concerning the airplane noise. And I just wanted to, I've lived on Mar Avenue since 1998, and it's a, or it was, a very quiet dead-end street. It abuts Pine Tree Brook. And it's just a wonderful place, or it was a wonderful place to live. Kids play outside with their neighbors. It's like a throwback. I mean, it really, it's just great. I just love it. Or I did. So, these are some of the things I did not do because of airplane noise. I did not garden as much this past summer. I did not enjoy walking my dog along Pine Tree Brook, at Pope's Pond, and at Turner's Pond. I did not have a patio or a deck built in my backyard like I planned. I did not enjoy lying in bed late on a Saturday evening reading, or falling back to sleep on a Saturday morning because of the airplanes. Things I did because of airplane noise, I met other people who are upset about the noise and pollution. I went to my job at Winter Valley, where I am the activities coordinator, and I noticed many airplanes flying overhead from two different directions at the same time. And they are quite low, and they're very noisy, and they're constant on some days. And I've heard and talked to retired elderly folks at Winter Valley, and they are very upset about the airplane noise and pollution, but they don't know what to do about it. I've given them the MassPort airplane complaint phone number, and they call it repeatedly, as do I, but we feel like it doesn't really help. It doesn't do anything. It just sort of maybe makes us feel better momentarily to complain about it. I really miss the quiet times and appreciate them much more now when I'm allowed to have them. I never noticed quiet before. Now I do. Because when it's taken from you, it, when it's quiet, it's like, oh, what a relief. You really notice it. I wonder how and why it was taken, and if I will ever get it back. I think of moving and retiring to a quieter, less polluted place someday. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else tonight for citizens speak? Okay, then, seeing none, we'll go on to our next agenda item, which is a meeting with our Town School Consolidation Committee to discuss a financial software recommendation. So we have several members tonight. If you'd like to pull up a couple of extra chairs, we can all sit at the table.
Amy.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mike. Have you got any luck? Do you have a PowerPoint presentation? And so the first question, I guess, in the words of Admiral James Stockdale, who famously said in the 1992 Vice Presidential Debate, "Who are we and why are we here?" We are the Town School Consolidation Committee. We were commissioned by you all about a year ago to look into opportunities for efficiencies in operations and processes in the towns and the schools. And our members, many of whom are here, are Michael Blanchard, who's a town administrator, designee when Anne Marie can attend the meetings, Amy Dexter, who's the town accountant, Anne Marie, and I notice, and I apologize, I think the M is supposed to be small rather than capitalized.
Right.
Phil Matthews, who is our community member, Jim McAuliffe, who was unable to be here this evening, Jim is the town treasurer, Glenn Pavlichek, who's the Assistant Superintendent for Business, and myself. And just to remind you of what our charge was and is, and that is basically to look for opportunities for efficiencies in the operations, particularly in business operations and information technology, and see how we can look for ways to consolidate and integrate those operations. And so before we get to the rigorous substance of our recommendation, we thought we'd try to set the context. Maybe you can raise the, I don't know if you can raise the sound a little bit. We'd like to try to take you back in time a little bit, to a different time. We were going to try to use sight and sound to do that, but the sound isn't working too well. But anyway, we wanted to take you back to a different time and try to remind you what things were like. Most of us in this room will remember the 80s, will remember some things about it fondly and some things not so fondly. And I think most of all, will remember that it was a long, long time ago. You can go to the next slide, Anne Marie. Many things were different back in the 80s. The music, and I wish you could hear the music, but that's okay. The music was different, the fashion was different, the style was different, the politics were different. Just about everything was different back in the 80s. I venture to say Milton was a little bit different back in the 80s, although I was a high schooler in Brockton, Massachusetts back then. But I think there were probably a lot of differences back in Milton back then. But one thing wasn't different, and you can change to the next slide, Anne Marie. One thing wasn't different back then, oh, it looks like we lost it unfortunately. Oh, you lost it?
Can I just hear the next slide?
Oh, well, oh, I didn't see it. I didn't see it. You got it?
Yeah, it's on the screen.
Oh, it's on the screen. All right, well, that's all right. The one thing that wasn't different back then was Milton's financial accounting software.
There it is.
There you go. One thing that wasn't different back in the 1980s was Milton's financial accounting software. And as best we can tell, the guts of that software, Data National, was implemented back in the 1980s, lo those many years ago. And as most of you know, there's been a lot of technology improvements and a lot of technology changes since the 1980s.
I think disk operating system came in in the 1980s.
Exactly. And so, oh, that was the last music. Unfortunately, we won't be able to hear you too, but that's all right. That's all right.
The big thing.
I know, I know. That was going to be a nice one. That was going to lead us into the financial accounting software. But that's all right. We'll work on the presentation for tomorrow night at School Committee. So anyway, so the next slide, so the problem that we've identified, now that we have the context that our financial accounting software came into being in the 1980s, the problem, the primary problem that we have identified to greater efficiency in the business office and information technology operations in the town and the school is the deficiency of this decades-old, cobbled-together software, which is made up of three different pieces, was Data National, which became WTI, and Fundware, and Zobrio. They all do different, they all do different things. And the result of that is that there are several deficiencies that we have identified in that software that we think prevent the town from acting in an efficient, in an efficient The result of what the town employees have to deal with generally is that we have about a $100 million enterprise that is basically run on Excel spreadsheets in a lot of respects. One of the main deficiencies that we identified just recently is that our current software is being phased out. So in three to five years, the company, the vendor that is supporting the software, will no longer support it. So the status quo is not an option. We need to do something. And based on our review, and I have to say, we, you know, we've met about 28 times over the last 10 or 11 months. We have spoken with about 10 town employees, other than the, other than the town employees on this committee. And in the course of that, we learned that this software is no longer going to be supported by the vendor in three to five years. And our best judgment, and the best judgment of people we talked to, is that implementing a new system will take 12 to 18 months. So if we wait until 2016, and we try to get approval for the funding in 2016, given that some of the modules, some of the accounting modules go in at the beginning of the fiscal year, some of them go in at the beginning of the, at the beginning of the calendar year, that takes us up to January 1, 2017. If we take our vendor at their word, they're out December 31, 2017. So we're right up against it if we wait until 2016. So it's our view that it's critical that this process begin and the funds get allocated for new software in 2015, and we think it's important that this be, that this be reviewed by town meeting in 2015. Other deficiencies that we've seen in the software and in our review, and our review of the, of the, of the people who actually work with the software, is that this software, because it's made up of different pieces and because it's old, it doesn't allow full integration. So it doesn't talk, the different pieces don't talk to one another. And it requires, in order to get consolidated information and information that you can analyze, it requires town employees to use Excel spreadsheets and to use QuickBooks, to use software outside the system in order to really do their jobs. A couple of examples of this, you know, the town accountant, when she gets commitments and abatements from the assessors, she has to manually enter those into the general ledger. She has to do that, she has to make over 100, I believe, manual entries a year of commitments and abatements from the town assessors. Another example, revolving funds, the town has and the school has them, they zero out in our software at the end of every year. So town or school employees have to put in the number at the beginning, they have to manually input the number at the beginning of the fiscal year. It doesn't roll over. And then one final example is that the schools are unable, the software doesn't allow the schools to combine their grant funding with their operational funding. So in order for the schools to get a real accurate picture of their budget, they have to run spreadsheets. They can't do it with the software. Another deficiency, and I'm talking a little bit, I'm going off a little bit and running on a little bit, but another deficiency that we've identified is the lack of timely report creating functions. In order to get reports out of this system, as I understand, it requires these arcane formulas to be put in. You need to put in about nine to 15 digits in order, it doesn't have drop-down screens. You have to basically program it in order to get a report that you need. Or you need to call up the vendor to get the consultants to help you create the reports that you need. So it doesn't have the functions that the town needs in order to create the reports that it needs, at least that's what, that's what we understand. An example of that is that payroll is not integrated with personnel data. You know, you can get payroll, but it's not integrated with the personnel data, so you can't get a full picture. As a result of that and other things, quarterly reconciliations, which could take hours, take days. And so we think there's inefficiency, we think there's a high risk of error. Another main deficiency that we identified was an inability to handle complex payroll. And this particularly relates to the school department. The school department has many different employees with different payroll structures, different payroll aspects. And this financial accounting software that we have, that we have, doesn't allow the school to run one payroll. The school has to run 14 different payrolls on its, on its software. And a couple of other things related to this, excuse me, the software doesn't allow the schools to connect directly to the Mass Teachers Retirement Service, the pension fund. It doesn't allow a projection or encumbering of payroll, so you can see where you are, so the schools can see where they are in payroll for the year. It doesn't allow the tracking of time and attendance and sick days and vacation, and this was pointed out in the, I think, in the management letter from the town accountants. And so those are deficiencies. And then the final deficiency that we identified, and these are really the five big ones, was the lack of budgeting and forecasting. You know, I mean, you all know better than anyone else that budgeting and forecasting is done on Excel spreadsheets. It's not done on the financial accounting software of the town. What does that result in? It results in miscommunication, high risk of error, employees and others putting things manually into their own spreadsheets. When budgets are approved, the town accountant has to enter manually and have a reconciliation done through spreadsheets. So again, we have a $100 million enterprise that is run, by and large, on spreadsheets, which, which we don't think is really the way to run the railroad here. So, what are the alternatives? The current vendor has a new product. It is a window-based software, which would be an improvement. Ours is not currently Windows-based. However, we don't believe that this product would meet the town's needs because it doesn't have receivables and accountable accounting and utility billing modules, and it doesn't, it's not a Massachusetts-based company that can connect, that has a module for the schools to connect to the Mass Teachers Retirement Service. This vendor claims 17 Massachusetts clients, but has identified only three, which are noted for you. And the estimated cost for this replacement would be approximately $100,000. The second alternative that we looked at is another vendor, which is used by a number of Massachusetts communities. The cost, we believe, to be in the neighborhood of $700,000, and so we have not pursued as much information on this alternative because of the cost. We think there are more cost-effective alternatives, and we've spent our time looking for those. And then the next alternative, and this is a more cost-effective alternative, this is another vendor. We believe this vendor would meet all of the town's needs for accounting and treasury functions and payroll and collections and utility billing. It does connect to the, it does connect to the Mass Teachers Retirement System. It does have utility billing and collections. This vendor identifies 132 clients in Massachusetts. It's a Massachusetts-based company. It includes several communities around ours. They claim 26 clients that used to be clients of our existing vendor, and some clients that used to be clients of the higher-cost vendor that we identified. The quoted one-time cost for the, all of the modules from this vendor is $274,301. There is an alternative with this vendor, and that is if we, if the town were to do it piecemeal and implement the accounting, treasury function, and payroll modules, the cost of that would be $153,000, $137, and we'd be locked in for the price for the collections and utility billing module for the, for the next year, and that would be about $125,000, $120,000. So basically, be taking it in two pieces. The areas that we identified as really a primary necessity, accounting, treasury function, and payroll, and then those other two functions that are important, but we think, given the budget constraints, that's where we could, that's where we could break between one year and two years. And so our request to you, and our recommendation to you, is, I don't know if, I don't know if, let's see if the music, it's the last slide, see if the music works. I don't know if it'll work.
Up as high as it'll go.
It's not going to work, no? There we go. All right. All right, well, so our request to you is, is to, to seek $160,000 to upgrade in Fiscal 16, to upgrade the financial software for accounting and treasury function and payroll, and then to seek $125,000 for Fiscal 17 for the balance, for the two, which are collections and utility billing. And that is our presentation to you. Sorry, the music wasn't as loud. I thought it was going to blow the, I thought it was going to blow the hall up.
That's the most creative presentation since I've been here.
Very good presentation. A question, utility billing now is done not through the accounting system, it's done in a separate system?
It's, we have data national that does the utility billing. We have Fundware, which is the financial accounting. And then we have Zobrio, which is cash management treasury.
And the Data National and the Fundware not, don't talk to each other?
Not integrated.
Yeah, okay.
You mentioned that you have 14 payrolls under schools. How many are in the town side?
Well, one for every department. It's.
So would you be putting your 14 payrolls into one system?
We would like to.
Yes.
There's no way we're allowing the schools to do that.
But would the, would the town side be in one system as well then?
It's all in one system now, but in order to break up the people in the schools to code it properly, they have, you have the pink sheets, the four different, the 14 different packets. So the idea of the payroll system would be decentralized, where we'd rely on the remote, what we consider remote departments, those admins in those departments entering their weekly payroll right in the system. And then the process would be a lot of going into the system and checking it and approving it, and bringing it through the approval process to where it lands downstairs in the treasury function, the treasurer's office, where the payroll will be run and the checks cut.
See, in the schools, the complexity is you have teachers who have one set of criteria, their Mass Teachers Retirement System, they can be paid over 26 weeks, but they only get 21 of them in a balloon payment at the end of the year, and they have certain features. Whereas, for instance, AFSPB employees are paying into the town's retirement system, they have different features, you know, there are different features to their payroll. And the current system doesn't allow really Whereas, for instance, AFSPB employees are paying into the town's retirement system, they have different features, you know, there are different features to their payroll. And the current system doesn't allow really heterogeneous payroll. You've got to have, run one payroll of all the people who look the same, and then run another people of payroll of all the people who look the same, and you end up with all these different payrolls, when, you know, a more integrated system would allow you to say, well, you'll be paid X and you have these criteria, Mike be paid Y and he has these criteria, and you just run it.
There's just not enough registers to handle all the different scenarios.
Well, even to the paychecks, if you have too many different deductions on your paycheck for, you know, pension and stuff, they don't all show up. It's only going to find a number of fields. People have actually been, you know, it's interesting, if you look at the end-of-year paychecks, they have a limited number of digits. So if you, if an employee earns over $100,000 at the end of the year, it's a year-to-date $13,400 and something, and it's actually $113,000, but they don't have enough digits on the check stubs to print it. You talked about an old system. It's, you know, I recognize it, because in the 80s, I wasn't at high school, unfortunately, I was teaching this stuff. And it's an old DOS-based COBOL system. For those who, to whom that means something.
I understand we have to upgrade, but have you calculated the cost savings between, we say, doing 14 payrolls and one payroll? Not just that, but the whole, the whole system upgrade, what will it save in labor costs?
Yeah, we haven't done that analysis.
It's not, I mean, it'll certainly save labor costs, but it's more the, it's more the integration of the information, the ability to get information quicker and more accurately.
And reliably.
Yes.
I mean, every time you rekey something, the issues of error come in.
Right, and if you're trying to run something on a spreadsheet that's not being reconciled to the general ledger, the chances that there are going to be errors in that spreadsheet are huge.
Right. And you, this allows, more than, you know, the time saved by people doing these reports and so forth, is time that would better be spent on things that frankly, many of them don't have the time to do right now, like the forecasting and the budgeting and things like this. So it's not necessarily that people have more time on their hands, I think it's a question of we'll get more reasonable work out of our, out of our people, who will now have the time to do the sorts of, you know, reporting that we need to do to really look ahead.
But I think it's, I think it'd be a good analysis. I mean, we focused on the deficiencies and the fact that there is a high risk of error and the fact that there is all this manual entry going on, all these spreadsheets being used. So we were focusing on it from a deficiency standpoint, but I think you're right, Dennis. I think if you did that kind of analysis, you could probably, you could probably come up with, and we've done that in our other recommendations, you could probably come up with some kind of estimate of the number of hours that you'd save, you know, and then you could put a dollar value on it.
Well, you know, I'm always a guy that looks for the return on investment. So if you're going to say $50,000 a year, for example, I mean, it's five years you got your money back.
Right.
The initial investment is returned.
Right.
So it's a, it's an astronomical savings, in my opinion.
Yeah, no, it's a good point, it's a very good point.
Well done, I think it's...
Well, I just want to say two things, if you don't have any further questions. One is that the members of the committee have worked really hard and continue to work hard. We're looking at other things as well, and, you know, we meet in this room at 8:30 on Tuesdays. It used to be two Tuesdays a month, but it's been every Tuesday for the last, since we heard that they weren't going to support the system in November, we've been meeting just about every week in here, just to try to get things going. So everybody on the committee has really worked hard. And then the second thing is that we'll be presenting this to the school committee tomorrow. So if anyone really wants to hear the music and the bells, tune in tomorrow night, and hopefully we'll, hopefully we'll have a better show for you.
Guess it'll be louder.
Exactly.
This is my second time hearing this presentation, because I've heard it from, you know, at the Capitol Committee, and the Capitol Committee is certainly on board with realizing the need for this, and, you know, this is a tight year in many respects, but I think across the board, the Capitol Committee is supportive of...
I was just going to ask that question, because Mike, it was a very thorough report and detailed report that, so thank you to the whole committee for, obviously, a lot of work on this. You're asking us in the report to support this, but it sounds like it's already been presented to the Capitol Committee.
Good heavens.
Is there been a vote on the Capitol Committee?
I don't know that we've actually voted it, but there's certainly broad-based support for it, I can say that.
Well, that's good, we know it's, there's a real need for this new software.
Our charge was to make recommendations to you, but because of time constraints, we went to the Capitol Committee last week.
And that makes sense.
Ideally, we would have come to you first, but...
No, there's an issue that we wanted to bring up. We have, in the selectman's budget for the current year, we have a $50,000 appropriation for the IT study. And I think, Phil sits on the government study committee, so we, this came up briefly at a meeting that they had last week, but it's something that I think we want to talk with the government study committee about as well. The $50,000 for the IT study may either, we may either have to go back out and get, put that back out for bid, because the bid that we got, really, we only got one bid. And we think we probably need a greater sum of money in order to do the IT study that we'd like to do. So one question that's been floated is, given this immediate need to do something quickly on the financial software, should we repurpose the $50,000 for, input towards the 160 for this year, given that it's a tight year, given that the Capitol Committee and your committee are very much in favor of going ahead with this sooner rather than later? And would that be a wise use for that, for those funds? And just, you know, have time to meet and reappropriate them from the article on the selectman's budget for the current year into the appropriation for next year? But the government study committee, I think, might want to consider whether the IT committee should receive those funds to then put the IT study back out. So it sounds like we may have a few different committees who might have different views on this, and I think what we should do is consult with the government study committee. Maybe have your committee explore it a little bit further at the school committee meeting tomorrow night, because the IT study was put forward, even though it's, the money's in our budget, it was really a joint request with the school committee. So I think, I think we'd want the school committee's input on it, since it was a joint request, and then we'd want the government study committee to tell us what they think. But that might be one way to help with the funding for the Capitol Committee, given that we're looking at a pretty tight year.
I can tell you that, and I think the fear of the Capitol Committee is, you know, money's always tight. Next year could be just as tight a year and maybe not as much free cash, that there is more of a thought process of funding the whole thing, especially if there is not money there next year. The pricing is only good, the lock-in pricing is only good for a year beyond that, or...
I believe it's a year. If we do the first three modules and the other two modules, I think it's, I think that we're locked in for a year. Is that right?
They didn't really give a timeline. They said they understand the needs of municipal financing, and they would, they would hold their price, but while we were in a phase in implementation phase, I don't think they gave a specific number of months.
Now, the modules we're not going to put in, do those include the receivable module?
Yes.
And I would rather see receivable stack getting tracked sooner rather than later, because I know they don't reconcile.
I imagine, I imagine we could probably, you know, piece it, you know, do four of the modules, you know, I imagine we can piece it together however we want. You know, we looked at it as the first three, those are the three that we thought were the most critical, but if you wanted to, you know, move one of them over and do four, is it four or the five?
Right, yeah, I suppose there's a lot of different iterations on that.
And they gave, there is pricing by module, so it's not, it wouldn't be too hard to figure out what that would be.
These are available through the state bid list, so they don't require outside bidding.
Okay, well, and it sounds like it's before the Capitol Committee, so it's really not a motion that you need us to vote on tonight, but thank you for the, all the hard work and the thorough presentation. Certainly something that sounds like we would support, in addition to the Capitol Committee.
Absolutely.
Yep. Great, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, everyone. All right, moving along to number six on the agenda, which is a discussion on airplane traffic over the town. And we're joined by our town council, John Flynn, and his colleague, Charis North. John and Charis, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for waiting. We had an executive session earlier this evening. How would you like to start? We talked in general about 4L?
We want to report to you what we understand about the RNAF for 4L. Basically, where it is now, what the process is going forward, and what the town's rights would be and opportunities would be. The testing, so-called, is complete on runway 4L, according to the FAA. What is going on now is the data is being reviewed internally in the FAA, in the FAA. No order has been entered yet, in particular, no decision has been made whether to implement the proposed use of runway 4L. When that review is completed, the, there are three options for the FAA. One is to decide that there is no environmental impact of the proposed RNAF, or that if there is, it's so insubstantial not to require further review. The second option is for them to decide that, yes, there is an environmental impact of the proposed use, and we will do an environmental review called an environmental assessment. It's sort of the middle road, if you will, of the options for the FAA. The third option is that the FAA would decide that, yes, there's an environmental impact of this proposed use, we will do a more detailed review called an environmental impact report. At that stage, if the decision is to, that no further environmental review is, no environmental review is required, that is a final order of the FAA that the town could consider appealing. That appeal would be to the United States District Court in Massachusetts. There's also jurisdiction in District of Columbia, but it seems to make more sense to consider it here. If either of the second or third options is done, that is not a final offer. They would then, they, the FAA would issue a proposed order that would indicate what the impacts are, if any, what mitigation would be done, and primarily how the RNAF would be implemented. There would then be a public comment period, at which Milton, citizenry, any member of the public could comment. We don't know exactly what that would be, that would be indicated at that time. After the public comment period, the FAA would enter a final order. That would be the trigger for an appeal. That appeal, however, would go to the United States Court of Appeals for the First Circuit. There are high standards of review for them, but that option is available. In each case, in our opinion, in all three of those situations, the time within which to appeal would be 60 days. We take a conservative view on that, to avoid any risk of being late. Couple of comments on the process. Number one, we think it's important to keep up the pressure in the sense of public input. I know we heard one of the citizens speak how frustrating it is. Yes, it is frustrating, but we strongly recommend that that continue, because as we understand it, it's kind of a unique situation where what maybe in the past was a wider flag path, if you will, more spread-out use of the airspace over Milton, somehow has become a more narrow corridor affecting certain neighborhoods in Milton more than it used to and more than it should. So even though it's frustrating, yes, and those who report might feel they're being ignored, we think it's important to keep that up. There's a record somewhere of that, and if and when, you know, you wind up in a more adverse proceeding, it'd be helpful to know that. The second recommendation we have is that it would be helpful to have expert help in this endeavor, to interpret the data, to help the town when the comment period comes. And I know the committee is working on that, as are we, but I think it's important to consider having expert input for that. It's a technical area that, in certain respects, is beyond the expertise of anyone in the town of Milton, not as a criticism, but that's just a fact. So if there are any particular questions about the, any step of the process, we'd be happy to answer them. One other comment I should make is, we understand that a question has been asked, our questions have been asked. The gist of the question is, why, if at all, was the process exempt, if you will, to now? What happened is that a determination was made that this testing process was exempt from environmental review. The interpretation of the federal regulations was that the testing process only did not require an environmental review, but that is only applicable to the testing. That exemption, to the extent it existed, is over. This process now is not exempt from environmental review, and as I mentioned earlier, one of the options is the FAA could decide, well, we don't want to do an environmental review, but that's not the end of the story. That could be, could be subject to review, and I mentioned that there are other two options that ought to have some measure of environmental review. At that stage, it would be important to look at not only the impact on the town of Milton, such as noise, health hazards, impact on historical, cultural resources, schools, whatever. It's a fairly broad definition of environmental impact, but also to make sure they follow the correct process. You know, these, they're not, the federal government is not exempt from following statutory and regulatory procedural timelines and steps, and that would be as much a part of the analysis as would the substantive issue of what is the damage, what is the impact upon the people of Milton, particularly in the areas that are affected by this narrow corridor, wherever you call it. On any, that's an overview. If the board has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. But that, and again, our review was by request limited to the RNAF on 4L. It is not to discredit any of the other complaints you're getting, it was just, that was the trigger for this particular review by us. And we don't mean to suggest that the rest should be ignored, it's just that this was the subject at this time.
So it's fair to say, John, it's premature to be considering litigation at this point?
Yes.
The monitoring period where we're waiting to see how this study progresses and where the FAA comes out on this. And then we'll continue monitoring it, people who have complaints should continue making the complaints as they have been, about noise in general, pollution, traffic. But we're not at the stage yet where anything is really ripe for us to take any action.
Yes, that's correct.
Monitor, see where things go, and then take this up again at a later date.
That's correct, because the reason is that the FAA hasn't made a final decision, a final order on what's going to happen, if anything, with the implementation of that 4L. But we don't mean to suggest that we should be sitting back on our hands or anything, but it's just that it's not ripe for legal judicial action. But definitely consider hiring an expert, keep up the reporting of complaints, however frustrating that is, and engage the expert. And also, the committee is doing this, we will be doing it as well, to keep in touch with the FAA in the event that their action is not broadly broadcasted. It's supposed to be in the Federal Register, it should be on their website, but there is no requirement for them to send notice to the town of Milton, unfortunately. So that burden falls on us, us being the town government, the committee, private citizens, to keep a watch on the...
The CAC representative?
Yes, yes. Keep an eye on the website, keep an eye on the Twitter or whatever else they do, press releases, the Federal Register, just so we won't be caught by surprise.
Yes.
But yes, that's a long one to answer to your question, is it, at this time, it's premature to have legal action, yes, but it's definitely not premature. Be careful, start preparing and analyzing, because again, there are substantive issues and procedural issues when, if and when they issue a final order on this.
John, at which point of this monitoring would you suggest that we hire a legal expert? Legal expert?
Soon, because, because if they go with the first option, where they decide we don't need an environmental review, then the comment period is over, so sooner rather than later. I don't mean tomorrow, but in the future.
So in other words, their testing is done?
Yes.
They're going to determine if there's any environmental impact, that's the FAA's determination?
Yes.
Correct?
And if so, what review is required, if any.
Right. If they determine that there is no environmental impact, to them, that's the end of it?
Yes.
Correct? But to us, that's where we start appealing?
Yes, yes.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay. If there is, if they determine there is some environmental impact, do we hold off on litigation at that point?
Yes.
Until they make their final assessment?
Yes, because in between those two steps, there's a comment period and an opportunity for public input.
How long is the comment period, you know? How long is the comment period, you know?
It may vary.
It can vary, and they can change it as well, they can lengthen it if they're getting a lot of comment. So it'll be no less than 30 days, and it could be 90 or more.
So we need, I think, what we need is to contact our CAC representative to, to monitor this on a daily basis or on a weekly basis?
Yes.
Because as you said, we, we don't want to miss a week and have it get to a point where we're gone beyond litigation.
Yes, yes.
Dennis, you're a co-chair of our airplane noise committee, so it would be helpful if the airplane noise committee, which has the CAC rep on it, does some of the follow-up on that.
And we have a meeting tomorrow night, just for the public to know, at the downstairs in the library at 7:00, to discuss that. We have Senator Joyce coming, I believe Representative Timmelti is going to try and make it as well. And the purpose of this meeting is to, to strategize as to how we move forward. So this, you know, what you brought to the table tonight is going to be very helpful to us tomorrow night.
Obviously, if, if we do litigate it, it's obviously a costly endeavor, and the, it's impossible to predict the likely sort of favorable outcome.
Yes.
I, I guess the one thing we did want to get out, because I guess there has been some misinformation that HUL was successful in defending the FAA, and apparently that is not the case.
Correct.
Okay. That's not to say that the town, that's, you know, I mean, clearly, there, there is a huge noise impact in the town, and so, so I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't do it, but just to go in it with, with eyes open that it's, it's probably an uphill battle. That's safe to say.
I think, yeah, I think you're right, Tom. I think it would be wise to, if we do get a lawyer on board, to make sure that we know exactly, or at least get an approximate figure of what this town will be spending to litigate it.
Yeah, and that's, that's going to be hard to say, because you don't know until you start litigating it.
Well, we...
It goes on and on and on and on.
I guess we can see what other towns...
The closest one we had was, was an FCC suit a couple of years ago, and that was tremendously expensive.
Yes.
I think that one, we actually did have a favorable outcome on that.
Yes, that's because it kept coming back.
But it, it went on many, 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 many months.
They're a little tone deaf at that level, but it's, it's, you can't help but appreciate the fact when people say, my quality of living is affected by this, I can't do thing, and it's very simple things, we're not, you know, like, which are important, you know, whether it's reading on your deck, playing with your children, working in the yard, whatever it is. You can't hear, you can't have a conversation with your children, or, all of those are important. Unfortunately, they don't fit directly into the statutes, but they're, they're important, nonetheless, and should, those points should be made and will be made. Another factor that would indicate success is, what is the, what does the FAA say when they get through with their review, you know, because those findings will trigger what the analysis is, what the counterarguments are. And I should clarify one point. The, it's not necessarily that, and I may not have made this clear, it's not necessarily that the FAA decides there's no environmental, environmental impact. The first option, they could decide there is an environmental impact, but it's so minimal that it doesn't require a review. Then the second one's, obviously, if there is impact, but it does require number two and number three, but...
So the one we're concerned about is number one, though?
Yes, in the sense that that could sound the alarm bells a lot quicker than, than, you know, public comment period, so to answer Mr. Cohen's question, yeah, soon would be preferable to have figured out that there's someone who can help us, some expert who can help.
And in all likelihood, it'll come back as the number one, no environmental impact?
Well, except for FANCY?
It's, it's, no, that was after, no, the last time around, they did do an environmental assessment, which is the, sort of a medium-level analysis for 33 left. They did do an environmental analysis. They found that there was no significant impact that had to be mitigated. Thirty, it was 33 left, which affects, you know, many of the overflight areas.
Okay.
So, John, in the meantime, you and Charis will start reaching out to some experts, you're already starting that?
We have, yes.
Continue to do that?
Yes.
So that we have someone lined up if, if needed?
Ideally, it'd be someone who's familiar with Logan Airport, because Logan Airport is somewhat unique in its location, its proximity to the water on one side, its proximity to residential neighborhoods, but the important thing is to get someone that's qualified. If it isn't nearby, well, as long as he or she is, or the company is, is, you know, familiar with these standards, that, that's, yes, we will definitely do that.
And I think we're looking for someone who is a, a noise expert, who understands noise and sound contours and impacts on noise to the environment, and can also perhaps provide some input on some of the other potential environmental impacts that could be felt in Milton.
Unfortunately, a lot of, as is true with a lot of disciplines, some of the better experts do work for governmental agencies, so they're conflicted out, but that's not unusual. It's true in just about every legal area that I can think of, but doesn't mean there aren't people out there, we just have to find the right one. The main thing is whoever it is has the credentials, but also the credibility in the industry, you know, because you want someone who will be at least considered fairly by whoever you're in front of, whether it's an agency or a court.
Now, John, the one thing you did mention, and I think it's good advice, is, is to continue to call the hotline, you know, when airplane noise is, is being abusive to, to the residents. I, I just want to add to that, though, that to do so, do so passionately, but do so respectfully.
Yes.
I don't think it really does any good to be abusive to the people that you're calling, and, and we have had many, many of those complaints in the past, and, and it really is just counterproductive.
I agree with, that's true, I mean...
The call is great, because they do keep, they do keep track of those records, and should it come to litigation, we can, it helps us prove the, the amount of...
We think so, because this point of, whatever you call it, the narrow corridor, the volume of calls should be very relevant to that, because if you're getting 10 times as many calls from a certain corridor in Milton as opposed to any other neighborhood in the area, then that, that means something.
John, if we get to the comment period, will that mean phone calls or letters or emails, or everything?
Well, written comment.
Written comment.
Yes. I mean, it could be phone calls, but that, the intention for that is written response, because they want to build a record, you know, they, as Charis mentioned, they're supposed to re, to consider and report on that, and their report should acknowledge receipt of information and...
And we want to build a record, too.
Yes, yes.
You want to build your record at that public comment period with your concern about the impacts, because you'll need to establish that. The agency will have to analyze it, and then in the next phase, if there's litigation following, one of your arguments may be that the agency didn't fairly and completely analyze the, the detailed technical comments that your expert perhaps, or other citizens provided.
And one final point is just to acknowledge, in our work, both in this and with 33L, to acknowledge all the hard work done by the citizens, either on committees or individually, who have tried to get something accomplished here. It's very frustrating, I know, but that, it's been a big help to us both then and now, because each time they've come up with information, it's been a big help to us, and I hope we've thanked them privately, but at least publicly, we'd like to do that here.
That's a good point, John. We, not only our official committee, but also the informal grassroots group.
Yes, both of them.
They've all done a lot of work on this, so we're grateful for all of their efforts. Well, thank you both. Anyone else, any comments or questions for Charis or John?
Good.
John, Charis, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night.
Next item is a meeting with our police chief, Richard Wells.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Good evening, Chief, you're here for your quarterly report?
I am. So you have a copy of what I emailed to you?
Yes.
What I think...
Is it on here?
Yes.
So if it's all right with you, I'll go through it, and it's broken down by sections, personnel, crime data, things of that nature, and then I'll let you ask any questions that you have?
Okay.
Do you want to wait till you find it for us?
It's not in the package, I don't have it either. I think it was emailed separately.
It was emailed, yeah, and it's a narrative, right? It's not a...
It's a narrative form.
I went to my email.
Isn't it on there, computer? Didn't you put that on? But you're going to present this to us, Richard, so why don't we, why don't we get started on it?
Okay, so in the, in the area of personnel, I just want to give the board an update, and I want to thank you again, because if it had not been FARA, this wouldn't have happened, but, but that, I just want to inform you that both Officer Bart Forcesi and Officer Tracy Mannion have been integrated, are in full patrol operations. Bart is on day patrol assignments, and Tracy is currently assigned to night patrol operations. We did have one resignation, Officer Mike Delaney resigned to accept the position with the Quincy Police Department, and depending on how we go with the current budget process this year and town meeting approval, hopefully, we'll be looking to fill, the next police academy available would be July 1st, we'd want to fill any vacancies at that time. So we're going to start to, I've told you, we're going to start to move the steps anyway to be prepared, should we gain full approval on what we have pending before the Warren Committee.
Chief, just a question, the academy, as opposed to the lateral transfer process, I mean, if somebody has resigned, and why is one better than the other?
So in the case of, actually, in the case of all three of these, we actually took Mike Delaney from the Boston College Police Department, so he, while he wasn't allowed on the civil service, from the purpose of the cost and expense, BC absorbed the cost of his 25 weeks of training on us. In the case of both Bart Forcesi and Tracy Mannion, each of whom this board had the opportunity to meet with, interview, and appoint, they came with a collective 34 years of experience. In the case of Officer Forcesi, he actually gave up his rank, he was the commander of the detective unit in HUL. Tracy Mannion was in the bicycle unit and was a 16- or 17-year veteran of the Plymouth Police Department. And the one real benefit we got from them, the downside is they didn't know the town. The benefit is we brought 34 years of collective experience at zero cost to us. So I, I think we made those, we made those recommendations to you in November, you made the appointments in November, and here it is January, and they've each been on their own for well over a month. So we don't always get that lucky, but that was a good one for us. And the one thing that I think I may have touched on this when we met is that we have a very young police department, and the one thing that both Deputy Chief King and I do notice sometimes is there's a void in experience. If you take, just say Tracy Mannion on her night patrol, I believe she may be the second most experienced person on that patrol, by significant number of years.
Yeah.
And so I think we needed to try and fill that. I got to give John a lot of credit, he went through a lot of resumes to try and find the right individuals, and I think both of you got to see the character of, of the two of them when they came here before you.
So when you make a decision, I mean, you're either going to make a decision to go one way or the other?
Yeah, you know, I, you know, yeah, so depending what, we could come back to you again with a request to do another lateral transfer, but I, I know that, and I know that you're going to get calls, I know that there is a list of Milton residents waiting now and that have taken the test, that, and there is another exam, I think, in April. There is an exam in April, but I don't think, it'll be, that probably won't be certified till the fall, but we'll start the process one way or the other, depending what happens. We could get lucky, I don't know who, really, who's on the list right now, we could get lucky and get another, like Mike Delaney, who's, you know, at a college or somewhere that already has the training. Those, to me, and I'm sure to you, I like being on the benefiting side than the damaging side.
Absolutely.
So next is, is Ann Marino's, we had a resignation of a dispatcher, and the dispatches, there were only three of them, there's three dispatches and I believe eight cadets. The dispatcher is a, is a unique job, and that most of them come in, in the, in 911 profession that's become its own entity, and they stay for the 20 or 30 years. There were two goals that we wanted to try and obtain here. One, we really wanted to try and get a town resident, it's not like a list or the test like we have the cadet exam or the police exam. And second was, we wanted to try, almost like the lateral, to find someone who came with the statewide five-week certification already done and paid for. In this case, the board, as you know, appointed a, a young gentleman who grew up and went to school here named Sean Casey, who has been involved in a youth explorer program with the Newton Police Department since he was 14 years of age. Newton was willing to pay and absorb the cost of training him. So pending personnel board approval, I think tomorrow night, he will be in next Monday, and, and we will indoctrinate him into the 911 operation. Maternity leave, one of the greatest things, one of the, one of the greatest things that has happened to me in my career, and we are very unique and privileged in Milton to have such a cadre of female officers. One of the downsides is when several of them get pregnant at once, you lose them together, and this was one of those cases. It doesn't happen that often, but we had four at once this summer, three have returned, the fourth Officer Maria Poles, who was assigned to the Milton High School's NSRO, returns the 1st of February. So I just want to update the board. It does put stress on us during, as far as manning levels, but we were able to work through it, and again, as I promised the board in the seven years previous, I don't think we've come forward ever looking for an RFT for overtime, and I don't intend to start that now. I want to keep Mr. Hurley happy. Under crime data, residential and vehicular offenses always remain high on our radar. If you see in, I know some of you went to the swearing-in of the new governor this past week, one of his top priorities, both he and the new Attorney General Mara Hailey have already made opiate abuse and heroin abuse a main topic. Because of this, and because of the, the way it is infiltrated into the metro Boston and South Shore area, we have, as you know, and you've heard me utter and state so many times, prime candidates for both residential breaks as well as vehicular thefts at night. In 2014, we saw a dramatic drop in residential burglaries from a high of 98, which took place in 13 to 76 in 2014, which was a 22% drop. In car break-ins...